Call to order the Johnson County Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, June twenty seven, two thousand and twenty-three. My name is Chris Ilev. I'm the chairman. The, Megan, if you want to read the notice?
Okay.
And then we'll do the roll call.
Okay. This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. Please note this meeting is being held in the board hearing room with planning commission members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, phone, or other electronic device. Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call nine one three seven one five nine six six six. If you would like to speak during the public comment section of the meeting, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click raise hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. The chairman may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All speakers will be limited to two minutes unless the chair designates a different time period. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and city and state for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. Board members and presenters, please state your name each time you begin talking and please speak into the microphone so that the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Let's do a roll call now.
Chris Ilev.
Here.
George Lund. Roger Mason. Jim, Jim Neese on Zoom. He's not present. Dave Johns.
Present.
Lindsey Grissay.
Present.
Kelly Rast.
Present.
Mike Levin.
Present.
Randy Downing.
Present.
Terry Atwell on Zoom.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum, indeed. This is now the opportunity for public comment. There does not appear to be anybody from the public who is here tonight. Nevertheless, oh, wait a minute. Okay, just wanted to make sure I didn't miss you. So we will move on to the next item, which is the disclosure of conflicts of interest or any ex parte communications by members. Anything that anyone wishes to reveal for the record?
Mr. Chair, I don't believe this is a conflict, but I just want to, when we discussed the amendment to accessory buildings before, I was in the process of having a building put up. It was completed a couple of months ago and it's done. I mean, but I just didn't know if that needed to be considered for anything.
All right. Thank you for your candor. Any other member of the commission that needs to or feels the need to disclose anything?
Well, I guess with Kelly Rast, with accessory buildings, I have currently have a CUP for an accessory building that would come due. I think we got a fifteen-year CUP at the time, so that's where I stand.
Shouldn't be a problem, but thank you for the disclosure. Hearing nothing else, I would move to the agenda if, and ask if there are any additions or deletions that any member of the commission would like to make with regard to the agenda. Hearing none, it will be approved as printed. And the next item is the approval of the minutes of the May twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Do I hear a motion? First of all, a recommendation for any changes, amendments, additions, or deletions to the minutes, and if not, do I hear a motion to approve?
Randy Downing motion to approve.
Roger Mason, second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. There's no opposition to the approval of the minutes. So the next item, very important item before us here tonight, is our public hearing on the amendments to the accessory building regulations.
Good evening, Michelle Lanniger, Planning Staff. Let me bring up, we're looking at here, this is an amendment to our amendment. What, you saw this back in March, and the Board of County Commissioners recommended approval on April seventh of the initial changes to the accessory building sections of the regulations. It was effective May ninth. At the B O C C meeting, the commission asked that the current conditional use permits for accessory buildings automatically transferred to the new accessory building use permit and not require those that have CUPs to reapply for that permit. So to clarify this, staff is proposing to add one section to Article eighteen, Section six, and that's up in front of you, to the very end of the section about accessory building use permits. It, we've worked with the legal staff, and it's similar to some verbiage that we have in our sections about special permits, about the existing conditional use permits transferring to special use permits. So we were to work that language out and is proposed in letter G of that section. It'll, it'll end up being about thirty-four. CUPs will be transferred to accessory building use permits, and staff intends to send those people letters to let them know that that has occurred and to remind them what their stipulations are for their permit because those would also carry over. So staff does recommend approval of this text.
Any questions for Ms. Lanniger? I guess I have a question, and that is with regard to the pending CUPs that two of our members disclosed that they're undergoing right now, how would this affect them?
They're not active CUPs, like they're not in the process. Both of them have approved CUPs. So if they will continue to need those CUPs because they either don't meet the new size, location, and whatever, they will get a letter stating that their CUP is now an ABUP. Here's the conditions that still are applicable, and this approval no longer has an expiration.
So it sounds to me as if they were to vote on this amendment tonight, that they would not have a conflict of interest because it, it doesn't really affect or benefit them more than it would any other applicant or any other person who has an existing CUP.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, I mean, it would, it would change their CUP to an ABUP without having them to go to the process, but that's the same, treated, everybody in that situation is treated the same. I do know off the top of my head that Mr. Levin will be needing one because of the amount of accessory building. Can't remember off the top of my head.
Mr. Chair, I'll just.
Ms. Rast.
I don't, I don't think it's worth. That would probably, probably simplify the matter if you would. All right. And you were saying with regard to Ms. Rast?
I can't remember off the top of my head. Mr. Levin's is more fresh because I actually worked on the recent renewal in addition, but I can't remember off the top.
Mr. Chairman, this is Sean Penlet, Planning Staff. I would just want to note, we had this discussion with legal staff following the first meeting when we had the presentation for the amendments to the regulations regarding accessory buildings, and the chief counsel for the county had indicated that this would not be a conflict of interest for any of the commissioners who happen to have a CUP or have had permits for accessory buildings. I don't know the exact term it was, but it's not a conflict of interest, but it is worth noting that you have a CUP. But I believe we also have Ryan Haga on Zoom, might be able to provide some additional explanation for this, but I don't believe that's necessarily a conflict of interest for a reason why a commissioner would need to recuse themselves from this situation, but I'll leave that for each of the individual commissioners to make their.
Yeah. Sean, this is Ryan Haga, and I can't put any plainer than you did, but yes, this was discussed, and given that this, that these provisions are being passed and to the extent they're being affected like any other citizen in Johnson County, it does not call for any sort of conflict of interest recusal. So I agree with what, with what you said, Sean.
Any more questions for Ms. Lanniger? If you will refer to the Ms. Lanniger's memo of June twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, there is a suggested motion, and if anyone on the commission would dare to make that motion, it would be an appropriate time to.
I'm gonna take them in here. This is a public hearing items. You need to open the public hearing, even though there's nobody here.
That's, that's, that's a very good point, and one that just flew right over my head. I'd open this to the public. Hearing nothing from the public, we will close the meeting now. Thank you very much. Close to public. And if you have the suggested motion in front of you, one of the commissioners would like to make that motion, this would be a good time to accept it. I have a copy in front of me. It, it's, it's, do, do we have that in the, can you pull that up? Yes, it's not, not the agenda, it's, it's the, it's the June twenty-one. It's a different document than what's currently up in front of us.
This is Dave Johns, I think I found it.
Okay.
I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of County Commissioners adoption of the amendment to the zoning regulations, Article eighteen, Section six, to allow existing conditional use permits for accessory buildings transition to accessory building use permits.
Terry Atwell, second.
Been moved in seconded, the motion read by Mr. Johns, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and I believe that Mr. Levin has recused himself.
I have.
Okay, just for the record. All right. Thank you, Ms. Lanniger. The next item on the agenda is the comprehensive plan review.
This is Karen Miller, and each year we're tasked by the state statute to take a look at the comprehensive plan and just take a moment to reflect on, on the actual document and decide if it is still usable and current and provides good guidance or if it's obsolete. And so this year, staff took a look, and we enumerated some things that we, we considered starting on page two of the memo, the top of the page, it says, "Two thousand and twenty-three annual comprehensive plan review." And so the, these issues that I'm going over, they're things that we looked at to either support the idea that the comp plan is still current or to provide guidance for future study in the future. And the first thing that we would like to point out is that we're currently working on updates to the two airport compatibility plans for Executive and New Century Air Center. And the plan strives to balance protecting the county's airport operations with protecting the public and also allowing surrounding landowners good viable uses of their property. The proposed new plans that have been worked on by the consultant in cooperation with, with staff directly connect safety areas with airport operations rather than depending on future land use maps that may or may not connect and correspond with our surrounding cities. So that's a, a kind of an exciting new approach. Michelle has been here and has kind of gone over that in detail, but when, I know when I first saw the, the new approach, I thought it was very good, very exciting, because it looks at areas where, like the, the flight approach areas, obviously those we need to protect, you know, potential residential uses, maybe it's not appropriate for some uses, as opposed to just kind of a, a static land use plan. There's been extensive outreach on these two plans. The, the list of meetings that Michelle Cricks has coordinated and gone to is pretty amazing, and the, the breadth of, of people involved, Board of County Commissioners, Planning Commission, Airport Commission, representatives, cities, even air traffic control tower managers, and then there's been multiple public meetings on that. We anticipate a public hearing in front of both the Planning Commission and also the, the Airport Commission this fall. And so these two comprehensive compatibility plans are parts of the comprehensive plan. They're located in, in appendices C and D. The, the next thing that we looked at is the recently adopted amendments to the, to the, the comprehensive plan regarding future land uses in the northwest area of the county. The, this was deemed necessary and appropriate to look at based on the, the city of DeSoto's large-scale annexations of the area. And the process included a subcommittee that, that met over a period of about six months and looked extensively at the infrastructure and other things going on in the area. It also had two public information meetings, a public hearing, and it, we also had a, a webpage that the public could look at at any time and look at any of the documents that we had for the meeting, and also, oh, I can't even think, the Zooms of our, of our meetings. This process did not propose road improvements or an update to carnip, and that's going to be the, the next thing we talk about. But also, I'd like to, to mention that the Planning Commission's recommendation for this amendment was approved by the Board of County Commissioners last Thursday, and they, they didn't make any, propose any, they did not make any changes. It was just approved. But what came out of discussions was the idea that perhaps now it's time to look at our carnip plan, comprehensive arterial road network plan. This was a plan that was created in, it was either, well, it was in nineteen ninety-nine in response to the, the Twenty-First Century Parkway that was proposed and, and did, did not go anywhere. So since this, this Twenty-First Century Parkway wasn't approved, we had to figure out a way to maintain our arterial roads, our section line roads, so that they could continue to adequately carry traffic between the activity nodes. And what that means is between the important places in the county, like the cities. So if you look at the carnet plan and look at the roads that think, that they think are really important, the type three roads, they're very obvious paths from like Spring Hill to, to Edgerton or from, from Gardner to DeSoto, things like that. So it's kind of a very basic plan that really kind of at a gut level makes a lot of sense that these roads that connect these important places in the county, we need to preserve and not allow a bunch of driveways onto them. And so with that idea of carnip, we definitely need to look particularly at the northwest, northwest area because we have a lot of development coming in the, the former Army Ammunition Plan in other areas of DeSoto. So planning touch base with Public Works, and, and we both agree that yes, we need to move forward, and this needs to be a regional approach, which, you know, thinking about it, that's another thing that kind of at a gut level makes sense, that we need to pull in KDOT and the cities in Johnson County and even Douglas County, and, you know, perhaps even more people that we identify. And so that is something that, that is being organized, and I, you know, I don't have any details at this time, but in this, but it's sufficient for the comp plan review to acknowledge this is the topic that we, one topic we need to, to look forward to. And so, and this is in this comp plan review because carnip is, is part of the comp plan. And so with that.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Just wanted to mention one thing about working with KDOT and carnip. They are in the process of doing some additional transportation modeling in that area, especially in the northwest part of, part of the county, as well as the southwest, and we should have those transportation model results sometime this fall, so we'll begin the carnet update process. I would anticipate probably late fall when that gets started, so more to come on that one as well.
Mr. Chairman, I had a quick question. I apologize, I am not at all educated on carnet. You make comments, level three roads, et cetera. Is there some type of a booklet or something that we could potentially get to help educate any of us that are not familiar with some of these terms? Or I'd also be interested to know about the processes. I'm sure there are studies, there are certain things that have been done or met, or I would like to learn about that as we're, because I do believe we're going to be getting more into this, I'd like to get a little education on it.
Yeah, Ms. Levin, it's excellent comment, and I think that the, Mr. Pedig has made in the past available to us some excellent brochures that are really educational in terms of showing you, not only, not only describing what different levels of roads are, but what they look like with examples of them, and we've got plenty of examples within the county. So I would recommend perhaps that, Mr. Leipzig, you could have each of us email the latest version of that from, from Mr. Pedig.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to do that. I think we'd even talked about having a, a Public Works update as well, and so.
I agree.
We'll look at getting that on the calendar, probably in September, I think, but I'll have to look at availability, Mr. Pedig, but it's a great idea.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, but with the KDOT report coming out in the fall, maybe it would be wise to schedule tentatively a January, February meeting where we take into account what KDOT is reporting with regard to its traffic study, and then with the enhanced knowledge of all of the members through looking at the different kinds of roads and where they are and what they are currently within the county, we could then proceed to make any recommendations that might be necessary to the B O C C.
This is Lindsey Grissay. I just had a quick question, more just a process question. So last year, we had kind of come with the, from the Planning Commission submitted a list of our priorities, things that we wanted kind of investigated, and I'm curious, it seems like throughout this year, I haven't seen a lot of those things on the priority list, and now I'm hearing now we're going to jump into this new thing, and I just was curious, when, when are the priorities that we had discussed as a planning commission going to come to the forefront of what the planning staff is going to do to present us ideas or investigations into those items?
The accessory structure permit is one of the items. The other thing that's happening this fall is I wanted to finish the airport updates and bring those.
Jay, I can't hear you.
Sorry, my microphone was not on. Jay Leipzig, I'll attempt to answer Ms. Grissay's question about the accessory structures permit. That was something that, that was mentioned as, as a goal for this, this next year. As we finish up this year and we're leading our updates to the Executive and New Century Airport plans, the next step is an update of our zoning regulations, and so the items that we talked about in terms of some of those provisions in that, in that, that list that the Planning Commission had, were all included in that as well. So we're going to start that process. Now that, we haven't, I haven't assembled a, a calendar yet for, for going through that process, but my, my goal is to finish the updates for the airport first and then begin those discussions here at the end of the year. And so that will certainly be, all of those items will be, be part of that update in the subdivision regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jay, this is Terry Atwell. This is for you or Karen. Are you going to be doing any type of subcommittee to discuss those possible carnet changes? Just because the carnet changes in the northwest and the southwest are going to affect me directly, so I'd kind of like to be in on a subcommittee if you guys set one up.
Yes, Ms. Atwell, Jay Leipzig, I would say yes, we, we've taught, kind of talked to just very high level with, with some of the folks in Public Works, but we need to have further discussions about that in terms of the, the makeup of the group and, and an overall schedule. Hopefully, there's, there's been a lot of discussion about this with, with the Board of County Commissioners as well, so as that gets developed, we'll certainly pass it along to you and could use your input on that process as well.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to number four, on page three, comprehensive plans, plan amendments adopted by the county regarding policies to guide utility scale solar facilities. I have a typo in this paragraph I have that the Board of County Commissioners adopted the comp plan amendments on, in two thousand and twenty-three, it was two thousand and twenty-two, but the, it, you know, it was particularly good for us to not only adopt zoning regulations, which was, which is what most communities do, but also to add amendments to the comp plan and talk, talk about the big picture of what, what it is we want to see from the utility scale solar facilities and, and what we expect from them. So for instance, we have policies regarding promoting rural, rural character, protecting environmentally sensitive areas, maintain fiscal responsibility through the provision of surety. There's a whole list of policies that we have that, that look at, you know, what, what it is we expect, and then the zoning regulations, they provide the details and implement that big picture. But, but when we started, when staff started drafting the, the regulations, we started by looking in the comp plan and what those, those important things were.
This is Kelly Rast. I have a question.
Sure.
Since the solar utility farm is, you know, relatively new, if things come up in the future more and more about solar utilities or things like that, what would be, what's the process if there was ever a concern that something wanted to be brought back up about something that was an amendment that was made or a policy to maybe rediscuss and look at maybe the new information that's out on the market? How does something like that work?
And absolutely, and.
With any of these, I guess.
I don't remember exactly how the, the intro to this use is written, but, but we, we acknowledge in the comp plan that this is a new technology, that we're going to kind of work cautiously on this, and we understand that as we gain experience, you know, maybe, maybe there's things that we need, there's new, maybe new technology, we need to have new definitions, maybe we know more and, you know, we're too restrictive in some areas but too lax in others. So, so, you know. So, so, you know, that's with anything, that's with any comp plan or zoning regulation is that if it becomes clear that there needs to be a change, that can be done.
Okay.
This is Sean Pennley, planning staff. I'll just continue off what Karen mentioned. Also, any of these changes with the new technology like utility scale solar facilities, we absolutely expect. There may be some provisions or some details that we need to amend in the current regulations, maybe based on the first application we get for a CUP for a solar facility. We may recognize that and see that there might be some things that need to be updated. If that happens, of course, we would bring back proposed amendments and would have to be considered public hearing with planning commission and approved by the OCC. But it certainly can happen and we would expect amendments as anything comes up. We would bring that before the planning commission is public hearing.
And the number five on the next page, page four is just a summary of recent comprehensive plan updates. And when I say recent, I mean in terms of the life of a comp plan. So, so in 2015, we did a policy map update. Planning staff visited all of the cities in the fringe areas and we talked to them about what they thought about the fringe area and what where they thought it should be. We did adjustments to carnet, including removing a study area between Mission and State Line Roads in 2019. And some of the the people here were on the committee to look at the arterial lots. We spent a lot of time, this was a very in important and kind of quite a different change, allowing arterial lots. In 2022, we we talked about the solar facilities and we also talked about in 2023, our update to the comp plan. So, so we've been active, we've been looking at our comp plan and staff. We we believe that we've worked on this enough to keep it, to keep it current and not generally obsolete. And our goals and and policies still are very good, based in good planning principles. And and planners use use it to guide us. In number six, zoning and subdivision regulation audit. That isn't directly related to the comp plan, but we, you know, acknowledge that as we work through those changes to the zoning regs, that maybe that might show us some comp plan revisions we might need to do. Number seven is just a little bit of a picture of how we're growing or not growing, annexing and that type of thing. And bottom line, we continue to have annexations and the DeSoto annexations were over half of of those occurring last year. So our number five are the recommendations with a suggested motion. Staff recommends that the the plan continues to be current and not obsolete, particularly the goals and policies. And that we've been active and been updating the plan. And we do identify two areas, we need to continue working on the airport compatibility plans and finish that and get those adopted. And as I mentioned, we need to review and update carnet. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
This is Kelly Rass. I want to go back to, I guess, kind of put it under the New Century Air Center. It's kind of a question process, all that. I do agree, Michelle did an amazing job with, you know, opening it up to the public, really getting public feedback, getting out there. However, I do know most of us probably are on this email chain regarding the C Nano Technologies building. And there are some citizens that really are interested in getting some answers to some questions, which I think are very reasonable questions. But there doesn't seem to be any response. So how does that work? And me as a citizen as well, as a planning commissioner, I kind of like to feel like those questions should be somewhat at least addressed and if one way or the other. So how does that work? How does somebody, how does a citizen get a response to very valid questions?
Pardon me, before you answer the question, it may be strategic, but I believe I've been left off of the email chain that has to do with C Nano Technology. I don't know what you're talking about.
Terry Atwell, I have no idea what you're talking about either.
I don't know who all was on it, so.
I've been on them.
Okay, and I know the county commissioners are on it, so I didn't go through and look at everybody, but so maybe not everybody's in the loop. I'm not sure.
Chairman, Jay Leipzig, and I, there again, this is not my absolute area of expertise. So I'm, I'm, I'm aware of the the emails and the communication. This is a company that is located out at New Century Air Center, involves a, a, a product, manufacturing of a product over there and there's, and it's, it's, it is a fairly new technology. I think in terms of an avenue for the public to voice their concerns, I would say writing a letter to the, to the county commissioner would be the the best way to do that.
Think that's been done and they are not getting any response. So in the last email that came out was what is an appropriate time? Because at some point, stuff gets passed and people don't get answers. And, you know, they're basically seeing Nano Technologies as a China-based company. There's, it's hard to find when it was actually established in the US. They are going to be manufacturing components of lithium batteries. There is some concern that that is hazardous materials. They've also gotten an incredible tax break from the county where it was a $34 million valuation, but the building, but it's, they're basically paying 30 cents per square foot for tax. So, I mean, I know there's a lot of implications, you know, it is a private thing, but, you know, we have to, if citizens raise very valid concerns and and even certain county, you know, commissioners or other people, like I've been digging and you can't find answers to these questions. At some point, who puts the brakes on some of the stuff to find out what is going on in our, you know, backyard? If it's also a public safety thing or whatever. And I feel like anytime a citizen raises, you know, very valid in this time, questions, they need to be answered. And so it's like, you know, somebody needs to answer.
No, Commissioner Rass, I I really understand your question, your concerns. The only outside of the purview, the the planning staff, but I could just say that I think that the voice of those concerns, the county commissioners is the, it's the option that I, I.
Kelly Rass, can we not halt us and say, we're not going to move forward on recommending any of this being approved until we get those answers? Is that not a valid for us?
Let me.
Because why are we approving stuff? That's what happens. Things just keep getting approved and nobody gets answers.
Yeah, Chris, Chris, I live here. You know, might be prudent to copy in the chairman of the planning commission with regard to these issues so they could then be put on to the agenda where we might talk about these things. That having not been done, I don't know whether the county or any board within the county has the right to approve or disapprove what a private business does. But if they're getting a tax break, seems to me it's a reasonable discussion item for the public.
But again, Kelly Rass, it goes back to, we need to be accountable to answer the, answer our citizens, these, you know. And if it's, and if she's just way out left field, well, that should be easy to answer. That should be even easier to answer, but give these people some answers. Don't just ignore them. And this has been going on, there's been several email chains back and forth, you know, where they're just still trying to get answers. Now they're at the point, what is a reasonable time to have to wait for a response?
Question, have any of these people come to Board of County Commissioner meetings and brought this up during public discussion? They certainly haven't appeared at the planning commission meetings and we've got lots of time for public discussion here. You know, so again, I I think that it would be reasonable to involve responsible people, including the chairman of the planning commission in these kinds of requests. And absent that, my response is I don't have any idea.
Well, I think, Kelly Rass, you know, they have emailed several people that would be appropriate to respond or to step up and take control one way or another. I know Commissioner O'Hara did a, a letter in one of the publications recently about this, like, does anybody care what's going on or no? So there has been some stuff. And again, that's, this is what's confusing because I've been to BOCC meetings. I've asked questions, I've voiced my comments, but you don't get any response. So like, where is the process that a citizen gets a response? That's my question personally, because I'd like to know that too when I have.
Well, if if citizens are serious, then they should, you know, try to get these on the agenda of the BOCC meetings and certainly our meetings where our agendas aren't so full that we can't talk to these people.
Right, but when you go to BOCC meeting, you don't get a response. If you ask them a question, they just, they don't have to respond to you. They just go next.
I understand how the process works. But I'm, I'm just saying, you know, this is the first I have ever heard of it.
Yes, I understand.
And the fact that, and Commissioner O'Hara, isn't she our liaison to this group? I haven't seen her in months. And she could certainly bring this to our attention if she wanted to. But if, if, if this is all just, you know, some kind of political shenanigans that are going on that leaves us out, we can't help, we're out of the process, I'm out of the loop. And so therefore, I, I, I'm interested in learning all I can about C Nano Technology, whatever that might be.
Kelly Rass, my main, that is my main point tonight is what is the process? What, when I get an email like this, like, who do we get to step up and get answers? Who's the driving force? I'm sorry, going to a BOCC meeting, you don't get answers. We've had public here that have asked very specific questions. We don't answer them, they sit down after two or three minutes. When do public get answers? That's my question.
Sure, I, they're.
All right.
It's a site plan that was approved by the Board of County Commissioners. There's been, there has been the the public that has addressed the Board of County Commissioners. And I think that that public comment portion of the meeting is probably the the best time to voice those concerns. You know, it's out, I I haven't received any of those emails, so I I'm not aware of those either. I'm aware of them.
Oh, go ahead, sorry. Chairman, I love, I was just curious, how, how does, when you were saying, let's get it on the agenda, how do you, how does a member of the public add something to an agenda? Because I wasn't aware that there's a process for doing that, but maybe I'm not understanding.
Well, we have, first of all, our BOCC liaison can certainly ask the chairman me or the our, our, our staff to add something to the the agenda.
Who's our liaison?
I think it's Commissioner.
Mr. O'Hara.
O'Hara.
Is our liaison. I didn't even know we had a liaison, so.
Well, yeah, well, she used to be here very regularly when something interested her. But I haven't seen her in months, so this obviously isn't a big enough deal for her to want to bring it to us. If it's a big deal, bring it. Let's, let's have it, but you know, you also need to attend the meetings and make sure that things are discussed.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I had a quick question for the staff. Does the Board of County Commissioners, do they not accept appointments for their constituents to come and talk to them?
Mr. Levin, Jay Leipzig, I, I don't know, I can't answer that question. I, I can just tell you in terms of the typically that's, that's the process. But I, I can't speak yes or no, which is I know that this, the, the, the site plan was approved by the Board of County Commissioners. The the public, that would be the opportunity for to voice those concerns and before the.
I'm not talking about the specific issue, I'm talking in general as a citizen. You know, that I could contact my representative and make an appointment probably and come in and talk to them. I'm not trying to devalue anything that's been said, I just felt like there hopefully is a process. My guess is there is one out there. And so I was just putting that out. Thank you.
All right. Proceeding on, Karen.
So I will take any questions or perhaps you'd like to discuss and make a motion as you see fit.
All right, if if that's our, is is that the conclusion of the comprehensive plan review for right now? The recommendation from staff is that we discuss the memo, which we have, and that the plan remains current and not obsolete. I don't know that requires a motion.
There's a suggest, suggested motion on page five if anybody would like to use it.
Dave Johns, I found it.
Thank you, Mr. Johns.
I move that the planning commission has completed its 2023 annual review of the rural comprehensive plan and determine that it remains current and is not obsolete. Particularly the the plans recommend, recommend goals, policy and action steps. And that the certain portions of the plan, however, are in need of updating and work is recommended to be completed as follows. Review and update the New Century and Executive Airport Comprehensive Compatibility Plans and review and update the Comprehensive Arterial Road Network Plan, particularly regarding to major roadways located in the Northwest area of the county. I further move forward to forward these findings to the Board of County Commissioners.
Terry Atwell, second.
We moved and seconded the motion that Mr. Johns just read. All those indicate by saying, who favor that indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion passes unanimously. Right. The next item on the agenda is New Century Air Center and Executive Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan Updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sean Pennley, planning staff. Given an update on these compatibility plan updates from both the New Century Air Center and Executive Airport. Staff is continuing to work with consultant Kaufman Associates on updating those two compatibility plans. We recently had a draft concept prepared by our consultant Kaufman Associates for an airport safety zone map and a compatibility criteria matrix. Basically, it's a new concept that we're presenting for these updates that will replace our current future land use maps as part of these airport compatibility plans. And we've, we've presented that concept plan to the city representatives. We've, we've had meetings with the cities of the city staffs for Gardner, Aletha and Overland Park. Generally, they were well, well received. They did, all, all the city's staffs did have comments, so some questions about that new concept. And so we're gathering all those comments and some questions. And we forwarded those to Kaufman Associates and staff is also working on a response. And we'll be prepared to discuss that at the next Planning Advisory Committee meeting. We're planning to schedule that later this summer. We're shooting it sometime late August for our next advisory committee meeting. We have a couple of commissioners who are are a part of that advisory committee. And it's also comprised of members of the Airport Commission and the cities as well. So we'll have an advisory committee meeting coming up in August. We're also going to have another round of developer stakeholder meetings. Those are really important. The first round, we had one meeting with some developer stakeholders that have development interests around both airports. They've been the most key groups of people we've talked to about getting input on that. We're going to have another round of meetings with them. And then we also have two workshops will be scheduled, one, two final workshops, one for Executive Airport and one at New Century to get any other public input, those that we also expect to be late summer, early fall. Then we'll be presenting the draft compatibility plan updates to the planning commission, airport commission for public hearings. And then following those public hearings, we'll be scheduling that for Board of County Commissioners for final consideration and approval, which we anticipate for this fall. So that's the current status. Happy to answer any questions on either plan.
Mr. Pennley, Lindsay Garcia here, I was curious, when you get the summary of questions from the other cities, is that something that we could also see? I'm just kind of curious what the concerns for the neighboring cities were specifically, just, you know, kind of seeing the sausage as it's made.
Yes, we had written comments submitted from the city of Gardner. We could certainly share those and I would imagine we would probably do that all as part of that presentation that we have before the planning commission and the airport commission as well. Certainly, we could provide that. And we would expect also that they, the city's staffs will be present definitely at the next advisory committee meeting. They're all staffed and they attend those meetings. We expect to maybe get some additional comments at that next advisory committee meeting. And then also for the public hearing, they will also be able to share those comments at that time too. So we'll certainly provide that as part of the packet when we present that to the planning commission and the airport commission. Absolutely, we could share that. You know, there've been some good questions about land use and how we're going to define certain types of land uses for the. and how we're going to define certain types of land uses for their compatibility criteria. Some very good comments and questions, but absolutely, we could share that with the planning commission when we have gathered all of that information. Includes a bit, but happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions for Mr. Pendley? If not, we'll move on to the item J of updates and other business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig, planning director. Just a couple of things, the proposed amendments, the rural comprehensive plan were approved on June 22, 2023 by the Board of County Commissioners. I believe Karen mentioned that earlier this evening during her report. The other item to note is that the, the appointment and nomination process for the planning commission, the East Consolidated Zoning Board and the West Consolidated Zoning Board were approved by the Board of County Commissioners on June 15, 2023. With that, that concludes the updates to the B O C C.
Any commercial questions for Commissioner Leipzig?
Kelly Rass, can I ask one more process question? Who's in charge of public hearings or putting a public hearing out or putting something in the paper? Does it depend what it's on?
For the, Commissioner Rass, for the planning commissioner, for the Board of County Commissioners, for.
Well, I guess in this sense, like for something like that building being purchased by.
That would be, that was a hearing. Is that for the Board of County Commissioners, they approved that?
Yeah, I'm not aware of a hearing being.
And maybe there wasn't, I don't know, I'm just, I'm curious.
Commissioner Rass.
How to find out, how can I educate myself more?
Be happy to look into that, yeah, I could tell you that.
If you're on that email distribution.
Oh, am I?
Same with Karen and Sean.
Really, okay, I have none, knows. I've heard about him, but I.
Just FYI, if you want to go back, maybe to your job.
This is Sean Pendley, planning staff. The planning staff is responsible for preparing public hearings for items that are presented to the zoning boards and the planning commission and the B Z A. There was no public hearing scheduled for a tenant at New Century Air Center, which is, I think, the project you're referring to. If there are other public hearings regarding economic developments or other incentives, that may be a separate hearing that's held by a Board of County Commissioner, I'm not sure, to be honest.
Is there like an objective or a list of like what determines needs to be a public hearing? Like, how can I get more information to understand how this process works?
Probably Linda Sater, the deputy county clerk, would be the best person to talk with about that. As Sean was saying, anything that's planning related, we cover. There's a public hearing in the case of abatement incentives, which this company received, that, that, that would have been a hearing before the Board of County Commissioners and the, and the deputy clerk sets up that, that process and the notifications and all of that for those items.
Hey, Kelly, this is Terry Atwell. If it's something that got approved out of the airport commission, you should be talking to the airport commission about it.
Commissioner Rass, just Jay Leipzig, one more comment. Yeah, the airport commission, similar to the planning commission, makes a recommendation and then they, they forward that recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. Director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of little things, the, I mentioned, we approved the amendments to the rural comp plan on June 22. We will be bringing forward the revision that we had the public hearing on this evening concerning the accessory structures. That'll be before the, the Board of County Commissioners. For our July 25 meeting, we have scheduled a, another update for New Century and Executive Airport. That, that is the, those are the only two items we have scheduled for the July meeting. So, I kind of wanted to kind of gauge the interest of this commission to see if you all would like to cancel the July meeting and just meet in August and take a, take a break for a month in the summer. Or if you, if you wish to meet, that's fine too, just I wanted to throw it out there direction of the commission.
Chairman's privilege here, I'm not one for meetings for meeting's sake. And if we really don't have much of an agenda and we can fill up the agenda for August and make that, you know, a more important meeting with some things on there. And I'm also ask my, ask a privilege to have staff do some research on this nanotechnology thing. I'd love to make it an agenda item, you know, where we all can learn something about it together. And so, I, I, I hope that's helpful, yeah.
I guess, Kelly Rass, my thing is, it's just, I don't want to get into the weeds of all the legal stuff of conflict of interest and talking to people, especially when I don't know any of this stuff. So, I'm assuming, you know, the head people that are on these emails are addressing it. But when I see they're not getting any response or whatever, that's why I was trying to ask.
And it, and it may turn out, and the, the staff should feel free to advise us if this is the case, that this is the business of a private company that is not something that governmental entities have anything to do with and we don't have any authority over it or any responsibility for it. That's an okay answer. But, you know, in the meantime, just knowing something about it would be helpful. And if you can, if, Ms. Rass, if you can send on to me some emails on this, I would like to know something about it.
Yeah, but, Mr. Chairman Iliff, I guess, I guess while, while we can't talk, you know, maybe while this commission can't address individuals, we do have authority of conditional use permits and other things. And so, if there are, if there are types of technologies that our planning commission should be looking at and maybe with a closer eye for regulating, regulations, to me, I think that would be completely appropriate.
It, it certainly would be if this is in an area that is outside of the city of DeSoto, at which point we've lost our, our grip.
Chairman, one last comment, I will say that, so if we cancel the July meeting, August we'll, we'll have, have a regular meeting. I'll try to have an update from Public Works in September, approximately depending on Mr. PD's schedule, but we'll try to do that in, in, in the September.
And in the meantime, if in the next week or two, you could send out, just have, have Brian send you the latest updates. He's, he, his group does an excellent job at producing things that I think are really informative. And by looking at them, you get a pretty good idea of what the Carnet plan is.
Yeah, that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Right. No other items on the agenda, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Chairman, so are we not going to have the July meeting?
Oh, no, I, I, I thought that was kind of decided.
Oh, okay, sorry, I just wanted to make sure for planning.
What's that?
We're not having.
We're not having a July meeting. Yeah.
To be.
I just want to make sure for planning.
I'll, I'll talk with you later. All right, that's good. So, we'll, we'll skip the July meeting and we'll meet next in August. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Kelly Rass, I make a motion to adjourn.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor and again, by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.